You can see that. Hello, recording. You can see that Danny's not here. It is, it falls during the school winter break, and she and her family are in California, visiting families. So as Vice President, I am filling in for her. Are there any items people would like to remove from the consent agenda? Joy?
No, thank you.
Shane?
Seven B.
Seven B, okay, for both of you, okay. And then I won't even ask you then Keith, but it's seven B.
Seven B.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Could I then have a motion to approve the order of items for the regular and consent agenda?
So moved.
Second, please. Thank you. My report is very, very short. I am delighted that my nature has been so kind to us. I was on Vaughn Road and somebody had pansies, already blooming, I have winter pansies and, you know, time is fleeting and I just, I always am amazed how fast, I mean, here we are at the end of February. And my father, just as a side, a little side, my father, one time, there were, there are four kids, and we packed six of us in a car and a dog when we would travel, go east to see his family. And he, one day, we were bemoaning something and he said, "Kids, I'm going to tell you something," and those words don't haunt me, I think they're amazing, but he said, "I'm going to tell you something that you're going to remember." He said, "Never wish away time." And I think to myself, it's absolutely true. You get to a point where you think to yourself, "Oh, my gosh, the days are going to last forever." And now we're going into March, we're marching into March, and here we are. So I do want to say that I'm so delighted that we're all here, and I'm so delighted that our staff thinks of such amazing things. And, and I'm glad that I can be here to fill in. So without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Tara. You're welcome.
Could I just ask a question? I had downloaded this, the board packet at home, but it's not downloading.
I'm happy to share.
iPad right now.
Well, did you, um, did you go through that thing where you have to hook up to the internet? You have to do that every time?
I didn't. Oh, that's a good point.
Yeah, you have to just, you have to say.
I usually save it, I'm sorry to.
Oh, yeah.
I usually save it as a PDF.
Yeah, if you do it, you have to do every time you come in.
Do my, yeah.
Okay, okay.
If you go through your email, you have it. It's sitting there.
Yeah, that's where I was going from. I'm sorry to interrupt.
You learn something new.
Yeah, because I thought you're always connected when you come back.
It always gives you a prompt too.
But that's a good lesson.
Yes.
Thank you, Joan, good lesson.
Thank you.
All right, well, we have had, as Judy mentioned, some really outstanding programs over the last couple of weeks. The Campanaro, St. Flamenco, we had standing room only, and even standing room was kind of busted out of the seams. There were about two hundred people here for that. Yeah, we were really excited about that. We had no idea what it would be like. We'd never used that group before. About a hundred and fifty came out last Friday for the chamber music concerts. So folks had a really great concert that night for free, and those musicians just get great exposure. And it's a warm, welcoming audience for them to practice in front of. And then a hundred people came out to hear about the F-Weck House as part of the Bloomfield Historical Society's Local History, Local Resources Program. A professor from Lawrence Tech talked about the house, because Lawrence Tech actually owns the F-Weck House.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Yeah, I did. They give tours on occasion. Yeah, we're really happy to see that many people for that, too. And Youth Services, they are gearing up for March's Reading Month with, with many wonderful programs, including a kindergarten readers roundup. Now, for those of you who have been paying attention for a while, we usually have a first grade readers roundup, a readers rally. It's, we've done that for many, many years. The Youth Services Librarians have been strengthening their relationship with the media specialists at Bloomfield Hills Schools. And through those conversations, I've learned that really kids are reading in kindergarten now, and they want to celebrate that journey with them at that point in their young school careers. So we're doing kindergarten readers roundup now. I know the Youth Services team, of which Amanda's part, have been working on skits and getting prepared to get these kindergartners excited about reading. And thanks to the friends of the library, every kid will walk out with a book of their very own and a certificate that celebrates their journey and some other fun stuff.
Oh, nice.
Yeah.
That's darn youth departments.
I know.
They're walking out with a, a book of their own plus a certificate? That's amazing.
I know, it is, it really is. Speaking of youth books, the display that's here in front of you is the Youth Media Award Winners of 2023. The American Library Association has a, used to be called the Mid-Autumn Winter Conference. They have that at the end of January. Now it's called Live Learn X, and it was held in New Orleans this year. John Tager attended, along with Vala Kramer, one of our adult services librarians. And they always announce the Youth Media Award winners, and so that's what I brought a sampling of here today.
So these are all award winners of some, some sort of.
Honor books. So this is the Kelty Cat winner, Berry Song, which is a very, very sweet book about gathering berries, and the main characters are Native American. Very, very beautifully illustrated.
This is Kelty Cat honor, so that's like the.
That's like the main. And then the Coretta Scott King winner, which is for, a book about social change, this book called The Talk, which is a very heartrending and kind of difficult book to read. So I encourage you to check one of those out and any of the other books you've got with us tonight. Speaking of the American Library Association, our professional organizations continue to stand at the front lines of the fight over intellectual freedom. And a lot of these books are, I don't know, significant in that realm as they feature characters that might be black or brown or marginalized populations, which a lot of the books that are being challenged are on those themes. But I just wanted to point out a couple of things that are happening, because we've been talking about this as a group, for our ambassadors group and in this body as well. The Michigan Library Association organizes a conference for library directors, which I think I've talked about before. It's called Think Space, and they always pick a topic and do a deep dive, and this year's is intellectual freedom. So we've been talking a lot about, about that. It's introduced me to several organizations that are not library organizations, but library-related. The separation, it's Americans United for the Separation of Church and State. I didn't know this was a group, but it is, and they are watching this trend very closely. Penn America, which is an organization that is devoted to helping writers and authors. They are also watching this topic. And an organization called Intellectual Freedom Project, which was started by a librarian, is also paying attention. All these groups have pledged their support of libraries and librarians to keep on fighting against book challenges and censorship and offer lots of different resources for support. So it's been great to learn about those things. In conjunction with that, I've been taking a media course, which I think I've talked about a couple of times, which is sponsored by the Library of Michigan and the U of M School of Information. And we had some media training a couple of weeks ago, which was really, really hard. These two former reporters, who are now like PR communications people, they did mock interviews with us around this controversial topic of a very conservative person is a speaker, a guest speaker at your library, and there's uproar in the community over that. And so they interviewed us. It was really, really hard. Like that I did it.
This was to practice?
Diplomacy.
To practice what it would be like to have to answer tough questions from reporters, and if, if your library was in the midst of a controversy. It's really good. It's so grateful that all these learning opportunities are available to us. And then this, I am very late in sharing this, but this is the American Library Association's State of American Libraries. They publish this every year. It comes out in April, so it's almost ready for the next one to come out. But there's a very nice summary of censorship efforts. There's a list of the top ten banned books, which we have all of them. So if you're interested in that, you can definitely check that out. You can find it very easily on the internet as well.
So that's from the American Library, ALA?
Okay, yep. So that's enough about intellectual freedom. If you have any questions?
I actually have a question about the Kelty Cat. How is it based on the entire, the story and the illustrations? Okay, because it's beautiful.
It is beautiful, yeah.
And they talk about a lot of berries that I'm familiar with, that people don't know, so. Okay, thank you. I just was curious as to what they pick. I didn't, it was just story related or?
So thank you for supporting us and dealing with the down elevator, permanently down. Our year is now working again, and the Friends are going to hold a two-day sale in March to make up for their lost sale in February. So look out for that. I just got word that the adult services table lamps are going to be arriving tomorrow afternoon, and the electricians are planning to come out very early on Thursday morning to install those. I understand there's some weather on the way tomorrow.
Yeah.
So we'll see if that impacts that plan, but that's the plan for right.
They've been on the, for about nine months, haven't they, ten months? Yeah, it's been a long time.
It has, yes. It's dragging out.
And they're beautiful.
We're in the home. And for those of you who are on social media, you may have seen our Library Lovers. It's so sweet.
I love it. I keep loving it.
During the weekend reading challenge, we asked folks to share something they love about the library, and we captured all of those really wonderful sentiments. And Catherine and the marketing team have made a little social media campaign out of all of those and shared a comment a day. They're very sweet and humorous sometimes, and library-affirming and warm. They're really wonderful.
Where do you, where is that published every day?
On my Facebook, Instagram and Twitter feeds.
Ah, Twitter and Facebook, Twitter and Instagram, I cannot understand at all.
Just like Facebook.
Is it just like Facebook?
Just like Facebook.
And Facebook, I barely understand.
This is more your language. I actually have a whole spreadsheet of every comment. I can send you an Excel file.
Oh, yeah.
That would be better. I mean, I, I'm a member of various groups on Facebook, but I, I, nobody ever, I don't know, nobody ever sends me anything. It seems enough.
The Excel files, so you can see all the nice things people have said. Thank you.
Oh, I like to see that, too. Send it to the whole.
Yeah.
Thank, thank you. That would be great.
They're very, very sweet. And like I said, some of her are very funny, too, sweet.
That is nice.
And now that you're working on an email, Catherine, I was going to turn it to you to talk about the e-newsletter.
Making a note of myself. All right.
Go ahead.
So our email newsletter, we use a service called Savannah to, essentially Savannah talks to Sierra, which is the library management company that, the database that manages all of your patron records, all of our book records. And Savannah pulls the patron names and email addresses in, and it also categorizes people based on your most common borrowing patterns, thereby creating different customer groups that might be interested in particular things. So if you are a person who primarily borrows through Libby, eBooks and audiobooks, you're going to be in our, like, digital customer group. Or if you have a young child and you're primarily checking out stacks and stacks of picture books, you're going to be in another group of people who might be interested in information geared towards that age group. So this is a really great, very powerful software that we can use to create a number of different targeted email newsletter campaigns. But what we didn't have the ability to do until recently was for you to choose which emails you actually want to receive. So we have a new subscription center set up for our email news. It's now on our website, so you can go in and sign up for our email newsletter. On the homepage, on the right-hand side, there's a little thing that says, "Sign up for our e-news." Do we have to?
Yeah.
Or will we be, I don't even know, like that. Let me rephrase. Will, are we, are we? So you're.
Opted in.
You're already, everybody is automatically opted in. Again, if you have a library account.
Yep.
A library card. So a few situations we ran into is, say, one person in the household has the library card, but other members of the household wanted to get our newsletter. They didn't have a way to sign up for it before. So now we have a way that other people can sign up for it. If you are just somebody who's interested in knowing what's going on at different libraries, but you don't have a card with us, you can now sign up for our card. And you can choose, as Tara shows, from the different, we have seven different newsletters available that you can choose from.
Where is it on the website? Can you go back up?
On the homepage, and down on the right, midway down the page. Not in one of the menu items, just on the page. Yep. And we've gone a little bit more, right there. Yep, and we're going to add it to a few more places to make our newsletters more accessible, because we do keep PDFs of both our e-news and our print newsletters. So we're working on a plan to make those more accessible from those menus at the top.
That's really cool.
Thank you, yeah. We, you know, we don't suddenly have thousands more people signing up for our e-newsletters, but it is a nice addition for people who are interested in specific topics.
Well, in your example, Catherine, is a really good one, that maybe you're a person with grandchildren, and you're not necessarily checking out all the picture books, so you wouldn't get the Youth Services newsletter automatically, but your grandchildren are going to visit, you want to know what the programming is that is being offered, you can subscribe to the Youth Services newsletter.
But this, we haven't gotten to the capability yet of, if somebody loves, let's say, mysteries, and we have a mystery writer coming in. Oh, you're getting there, good, because I think that's so.
Because now, you know, you can sign up for concerts newsletters.
Oh, interesting, okay.
Digital. There is one that features new adult fiction and nonfiction books.
Okay.
That's probably as narrow as we get. Each one of these newsletters, a staff member is writing these monthly. So these aren't automated in the sense that they're automatically generated from new titles or anything.
Okay.
We're still, you know, taking staff time to write these and make sure the content is relevant. I don't know if we have enough mystery lovers to warrant a mystery only.
I don't know, but.
Who would sign up for it?
I just am curious, you know, if you like knitting, and there's going to be, the display is going to have knitting, or there's going to be somebody who's talking about knitting, you know, just, but that would be something that the person would have to fill out, that he or she would want all that information sent to them, so.
And it would be something we'd have to start create.
Right, right, absolutely. But a time will, that'll get there.
Yeah, I think so.
I do, too. I do, too. Ever possible.
So I, I want to sign up for books and more, so I just need to go online.
And this also gives you the option, you know, at the bottom of every email you get from an organization, there's the unsubscribe link.
Sure.
This will now take you to a manage your subscriptions page, where you'll have these choices. So if somebody doesn't like a newsletter that they're getting, rather than just unsubscribing from all, they'll have a choice to just stay connected with what's important to them.
Good. You eventually should have one called the Patrons Newsletter, where they can say, "I've read this book," or "I like this staff person," or something like that, or "This is my little article that I'm waiting to write about." Thank you. Now it's done, I can finish.
Go.
Go home.
All right, that's the end. Oh, no, I do have one other thing to share with you that just developed this afternoon. The Oakland County Historical Commission has come up with this, like a touring poster display. They're trying to highlight some aspects of Oakland County history and how it fits in with the macrocosm of American history. So for, we just got the first poster this afternoon, and it's all about Oakland County's part in the arsenal of democracy during World War II.
Oh, that would be interesting.
How we support it, yes. So we're going to hang this in the hold area, so when you come in to pick up your holds, there's a big blank wall there. We're going to hang the poster there. It's supposed to rotate every month or so.
Yeah, no, there's a great book. I cannot think of the name of it, but I think it's called Arsenal for Democracy.
Sure of that.
It's fantastic, and it is all about Detroit and the automotive industry's place in the war.
See, it could be the first for so.
The game of the newsletter.
Yeah, there we go.
So it'll just be there a month.
I mean, we could have a little bit of a.
Frame, but two or three months, and then it would change out, and some, a new one will come in on a new topic.
That we could also create at this meeting for her.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Just out of curiosity, there was a wonderful display here a few months ago. It had to do with neighborhoods and race relations, and do you know what I'm talking about?
I do, yeah.
Who installed that? That was.
And it was very, it was not here very long.
Michigan Roundtable for Equity and Diversity.
That's what it was.
Yes, I have been thinking about that display a lot. That display was part of our staff development day. We, we talked about diversity and inclusion in our organization, and that was part of it. And it was only here for a week, maybe ten days.
Right, it was, yeah. How does something like that get in, does, how do you find out about that and arrange to have it brought into the library?
That one, we had come across this group, we were looking for speakers on that topic.
Oh, okay.
And this was part of the whole process. So staff were encouraged to read the panels and think about them, and that was part of our.
I get it.
But we had many requests for it to be here longer, and I felt really interested, so I'm sure we'll bring it back at some point.
Okay, interesting.
Thank you, Tara. Do we have a motion to approve the remaining consent agenda items, please?
Some.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
I.
Perfect. I cast my eyes to the lovely Amanda from SOC, and thank you. I know you're back on board. You've been on SOC before, correct?
I have.
Yeah, so we thank you once again for stepping up to do that, because it's such an important part of our library. And you have the floor now. If there's any news you'd like to give us?
Tomorrow is the all-staff meeting, where next year's slate of SOC members will be presented to the library staff for them to approve.
It's kind of weird, because the year is winding down for SOC.
Yes, we follow the fiscal year.
Right, right. So will you be staying on, or are you going off?
If I'm voted in.
That's what I thought. I thought you were, I thought you were on the ballot, okay.
It's election night for me.
Yeah. And if you're elected, you promise to do something.
We'll have another fun holiday party.
Good, good. I'm looking forward to.
But no plans, just no, no little tidbit you want to give us yet about what's going to happen?
You have to wait for the new.
Okay.
SOC.
Exactly. I can't say that.
The March meeting.
Outgoing SOC has submitted a wishlist request to the Friends already.
Oh, good.
Because we have a wishlist process happening, so they have.
Good, okay. Thank you very much. We have no unfinished business, so we're going to turn it over to the new business, and I'm going to turn it over to Tara. I'm going to look at Shane. Shane, when this is over, there's a motion on page thirty-five. If you wouldn't mind handling that when our discussion is over, that would be great. Thank you.
Yeah, so we are talking about the vending services bid. Our bid, possibly, we've got out a handful of things every three years. Usually we find these contracts for a year with the option to write them two more times for a total of three years. And vending services is just at its, at its moment of being reviewed. And Catherine, as Assistant Library Director, is in charge of this process, and I am going to turn it over to her, and she will share with you more information.
Sure. So the, our current three-year contract with Corporate Dining expires at the end of this fiscal year, March thirty-first. So in December, we put out a request for proposals and actually mailed that to over sixty vending companies in the metro Detroit. I will say, our adult services staff use some of their very handy business databases to compile a complete list of area vending companies, which was a great bit of reference work. Even with all those sixty, we received just two bids in response to the RFP. One bid was from our current company, Corporate Dining Concepts, and the other bid was from a new to us company called Perfection Vending. We had a whole set of criteria outlined in the RFP that we judged them on, and Corporate Dining had been offering us a commission of twenty percent on our staff area vending machines and twenty-five percent on our public area vending machines due to.
Can I say something about that really?
Sure.
We don't pay anything for this service. They give us a commission. The commission from the staff machines goes to SOC. That's one of their funding sources. The commission from the cafe comes into our general fund at the library, and that's the report that the finance committee gets, is that, that vending commission. Here we are.
But how do you know that? Because if you, you can pay fifty cents for a Coke and it costs them forty cents, did we get a commission or not? How would we?
We rely on their sales reports and their sales data to give us. Corporate Dining's been giving us quarterly commission checks, so they report out what their quarterly take was on those machines and then what.
Their inventory, if they restock, so. You know.
Like we, this will, it doesn't cost us what you, what we charge you for the car. And I, and my cousin's in the vending business, that's why I know a lot about this, but okay, we can go.
I, I believe we're getting percent of sales.
Not of.
Percent of sales.
Right, right, it's not a profit. Yes, it's on, we sold twelve Cokes, and we're going to give you fifty cents a Coke.
Yeah, I guess if the Coke is a dollar, we get twenty-five cents. They probably pay twenty-five cents, and they're keeping fifty cents, would be my rough guess. So we were, again, twenty percent on staff lounge vending machines, twenty-five percent on public vending. Corporate Dining expressed a lot of concern over the pandemic economy. And so their new bid would give us zero percent on staff machines and fifteen percent on the public cafe machines. Perfection Vending, on the other hand, is offering a twenty percent commission on all vending machines. Corporate Dining is a nationwide company headquartered in Rochester Hills. Perfection Vending is a local company that handles all small organizations like ours. So primarily for these financial reasons, we recommend going with perfection vending, so that SOC can continue receiving eight percent of sales from the staff lounge machines. We also have frequent issues with faulty machines through Corporate Dining.
Yeah, I thought that was kind of telling.
And while they're always very responsive to our service calls, it is still frustrating for staff and patrons to have machines frequently out of order, for staff to be facing those service calls on a regular basis. We're hopeful that perfection vending might anticipate the issues a little more quickly, and based on their references, primarily with school systems, with the references we had for them, they express that there are very few times the machines are out of order, which is hopeful.
Did, Catherine, did you mention that the, the reason for reducing the commission was COVID?
The, the reduced traffic due to COVID.
The reduced traffic.
But one could also say, if your machine isn't working, then less people would be able to purchase. So that might be reduced amount as well, that'd be across their minds.
And, well, they may have had reduced traffic, and many, had many machines, not only.
Yeah, there's no doubt that's.
The libraries.
That shutdown was terrible for vending.
Sure, sure.
Quick question. How are the prices for items in the vending machines established? Do these companies set the prices?
They do.
Do you know if perfection vending may have a tendency to set higher prices than Corporate Dining Concepts?
They have a comparable.
They are, oh, you, you have that on that?
It was part of the.
Was it in there? Okay, I guess I missed it, so.
I don't know if it was in the. I think it was.
Okay, oh, I thought it was in there.
Okay, I'm sorry if I missed that. If you know that for a fact, then I get it.
Page thirty-seven.
I thought this summary was great. This makes it so recent. Yeah. Doing this, and I think what you're saying is, we get the commission, I didn't understand before, it's, we get twenty percent off the top. So prices go up by more than twenty percent.
Right.
Something's wrong, but within twenty percent, that's, that's fine.
Yeah.
So, I, yeah, very helpful.
Are there other questions for Catherine? And Catherine, thank you very much for that report. Other questions?
Are here in the center of the table, if you care to.
If not, I'll turn to Shane, and then we can have more discussion after the motion is made before we vote on it. If not, I'll turn to Shane and then we can have more discussion after the motion is made before we vote on it. So Shane?
Sure, I'm happy to move that perfection vending. Eighteen seven fifty fourth street, unit eighteen River View, Michigan, be awarded the contract to provide vending services.
In a second, please.
A second.
Thanks. Is there any more discussion or questions for Catherine? Uh, when do the machines get?
We'll have to arrange that with both companies. There may be a couple of days where we're without vending services. Because we'll have to arrange with Corporate Dining to pick up their machines and perfection vending to bring theirs in. But I'm hoping to work with you go on that to make it as quick and seamless as possible. But right around the end of March, beginning of April. The contract goes until the end.
And then of our year.
Exactly.
Other questions? No, we have a motion on the table. All those in favor of supporting. Perfection, thank you. I turned the page, so I didn't have it. All those in favor of supporting the new bid for perfection, new contract? You, anyone opposed? All right, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you.
And no, we can't have a Starbucks in that we've had many. So we know we don't have the room for it, so. The discussion for items removed from the consent agenda, we have seven B, which is actually on, if you go to your. Your computer, it's on page seventeen. And we'll start with Shane. Your question.
Yes, you can go back to eleven.
Okay, page eleven.
Which is seven as well. This is for this one's for you. What? The seventeen thousand dollar prepaid garden services certificate. What is that?
We get, is this the one we get the discount? So if we sign the contract with Golden Wash, they have a program that if you sign it early. And give them some money so that they know that we're interested and that we're not going to pull out, we get a discount. From their for their services. So what they do is they do all of the plantings. They do the four urns that flank the. Small little island as you come up. These are not the urn, the urn that is at the front of the door, though. That's different from this contract. That goes to the florist, but. They also do all of the landscaping that we've had. We've had them for, gosh, I want to say a good ten years. More than that, yeah. And Jim Slazinski is, this is, he considers he's a master of design. And he is now semi more semi retired than more retired than semi retired, but. He is the person who's designed many of the gardens that we see and we get the pleasure of walking through. And Golden Wash has been pretty good. I was a little bit disappointed with them last year. I think that they came to us a little later than they normally do to plant things. And I know that we've talked to them about that because they are probably. They do come, they put down the woodchips or the shredded bark, they plant the materials. They come in ten and so if we give them money early, we get a discount. And it is significant, the discount, so.
And then did you see in the pass around the suggestion to separate our begonias? Again, I'm going to defer that to you.
Oh, no, I didn't see that. Is it in there? Yeah.
I have a lot of expertise in that.
Yeah, that is interesting. It depends on what kind of a gong is. Yeah, yeah.
Okay, on that same page, there's there's a check five thousand for Value Line database. And there's a check for ProQuest. Again, I I have some friends over there for thirteen thousand. I'm not questioning the expenses themselves, but at some point. It would be really interesting to see what we're paying for our databases as compared to their usage. I see on the the stuff you do for client in the packet. You do see increased usage across the board for digital, which is awesome. But I was just wondering how we measure whether each individual services. It's beneficial, so whenever we get to that.
Yeah, sure.
And that was, I had one other comment. On page fifteen. Which is the budget page. This is going to be sound a lot like the comment I made before. For me to tell how we're doing. Because I don't really understand the page. August, I've got year to date. So year, if you look at year to date. Expenses of five one revenue, sorry, revenue of five one, expenses of five eight, so we're under one or seven hundred grand or so. Is that good?
So it's the way our tax revenue comes in. It's coming in right now. We have a couple of months. To go, a couple more payments to go and we will get all that tax revenue and then we will be fine, but it does look a little funny right now.
So this is good.
It's good. It's on track, yes.
You didn't read the smartphone that you maybe shackled.
There you go, there you go.
So it is, it is interesting.
I know I'm speaking out of turn and I know you're next, but there was one that I wanted to ask a question about too, and I'm sorry I didn't.
Is it on the seven area? Okay, okay. So we'll come back to you because we we'll go to Keith next and then come back.
Well, actually.
I'm sorry, Shane, were you finished? You probably weren't finished. We're, okay.
My question was on exactly the same page as Shane's because. I equally really do not understand this chart. I explained it a little bit.
Wait, which one?
Exact chart and I know I'm on the finance committee, so I guess I have to sort of understand this chart eventually. But and I I know Shane has asked this question in the past and maybe I didn't listen well enough. So for example, when you look at taxes, just the first row. I understand the first row. That was the adopted budget, our first column. Then I understand the second column, the eight point two four eight million. That was the amended budget. But I honestly don't understand this current month column. Where it's three point six four two million. What does that mean exactly?
It's what we've taken in this month. So that was the, which really was last month because we're reporting on January at this point. It's the amount of taxes that were received in January.
Okay, and eventually the taxes that you receive are going to sum up to eight point two. At some point.
That's the, that's the idea.
And at what point does that get to that? When is that supposed to get to that eight point two million?
Right at the very end of our.
Which is March.
Probably we'll see it reflected in April because we'll get, we'll report on February at the March meeting. We'll report on the year end at the April meeting.
Okay, how do I explain then the next column where it says year to date, four point eight nine two million?
That's how much tax revenue we've received this year, because we don't start getting those tax payments until December.
So it's ten months of, it's ten months year to date.
Right, so you give it a little ten months.
As compared to what, which is what you normally want, you know, ten months prior year and a normal. Right, right.
I guess let me, let me try to explain it this way. In August, when we do our preliminary budget, we. Ask the township for their tax revenue estimate and they. You know, the assessor has this big giant number that is the property tax value for the entire township. And then they figure out how much we're going to get based on all of our military rates, which we have. Three mil, four militaries. So they tell us you're going to get eight point one million dollars or whatever it is. So then we put that in our budget. At that point in the year. We are still spending down our fund balance. So that's why when you look down at the bottom of the page under the fund balance designation. There's the committed fund balance of eight months of operational expenditures, very tiny print.
Yes, okay.
We set aside that money in our fund balance to pay the bills during those eight months before we start getting the tax revenue. So up until a month or so ago, we were spending out the money we had received the year before. And so then in December, we start getting these tax payments. And then that's when we start getting this revenue that comes in and. Yeah.
Okay, so Bloomfield connects taxes twice a year. Okay, there's the summer tax, there's the winter tax. I'm trying to remember the dates for all these things. I think. The winter tax.
February.
Yeah, it's due in February. Okay, so. Seems like we should get a chunk of money in February or March that comes out of that winter tax collection.
That's exactly what happens.
Okay, and then there's the summer tax collection due in August, if I remember correctly. September, okay. And then we get another chunk of money at that.
They only collect for the library in the December, in the winter bill.
Okay, so they're going to give you a check for eight point one million dollars sometime in.
The next couple of months.
They give us multiple checks over like four or five months.
Four or five months. Okay, so they've given you one check and that's.
They've actually given us, I think, four at this point, because I think we got one in December, January, February.
You receive your bill in December, but you have until February to pay. Some people pay early. Some people wait to the to the end, so.
Yes, I understand that. So when you say that you've received four point eight nine two million, that's in the fiscal year.
Yes.
Okay, and that fiscal year included last December and then some checks, okay.
Exactly.
So the current month of three point six four two means that in January. A large amount, because this reflects January.
Yeah, we got a big chunk, which kind of makes sense if the bills went out in December, people get around to paying them.
Okay, well, I'll have to just think about it. Can I get the revenue? If that's the one thing we don't control, these are the things we do control. And what's waiting, you know, let's talk about with Danny and our new CFO, but I would love to see it like a comparative. Number of these things or what our budget is through the ten months. And maybe we don't. Budget monthly, but then maybe the prior year, just something to say, we're doing good. I know you, you know, I I trust you. I'm sure we are doing good when you know.
To think about what. Because you guys are business guys, so what what does it mean to do good? I mean, we're we're do, I I think we're doing good if you look at percentage of what the budget is spent. And if we're not overspent, like right now, we're at fifty six percent total revenues. And we're eighty three percent through the year. That, to me, that's doing good.
You're looking at a year over year expenses.
Revenues, I'm I'm with you a hundred percent. Our revenues are, it's the taxes, so not just, it is what it is. But on the expense side, I would agree. It says we've spent fifty six of our expenses, but we're ten months through the year, so we must be crushing it. But I bet we're not.
What do you mean? What do you mean by crushing it?
If we've only spent fifty six percent of what we thought we would spend and we're ten months through the year. That means we're going to spend twenty some percent less over the year than we thought. Is that right?
Yeah, that's what that's.
Great news.
That means, yeah.
Yeah, okay, I I know. I'll think about that because I've never, I never really focused on that column.
Okay, yeah, because we, you know, for government, it's. I mean, it's kind of a sure thing what money you're going to get. You know, we're not trying to make sales. So we know we're going to get this big chunk of money and then we have that money to use over the year, so we want to make sure we don't overspend over that money.
Okay, will you explain again? Because again, those numbers at the bottom, I think are really important, but I hadn't focused on those.
Balance part, yep.
So you're saying the four point six came out of last year's budget?
Yes.
And the five point six is what we're building for next year's budget?
Yes.
Interesting, okay.
Will some of that go to capital expenses?
Okay, yes.
I went to the Michigan Library. Trustee. One oh two or whatever the two point oh one was last night and part of what they were talking about was.
Fund balance.
Fund balance. Penal fund, their penal monies and, you know, just very interesting. And we're very proud that we have assigned. Ninety nine point some odd percent is all assigned. So that we don't have unassigned because that makes it very murky. People are wondering what we're doing, so we're very proud that we keep that assigned.
Well, and I think even more so going into the mileage.
People know where we're spending the monies, right? Okay, so did you have any other questions?
It was, thank you very much for recognizing my question. Spoken out of turn or questioned out of turn. It is the amount that, why do we pay Farmington Community Library? For the databases that we get through the state. But like they are holding company for. So there's a kind of a some consortium of libraries called Metronet. And Farmington is the fiduciary agent of Metronet, so they hold all of our money. And then they pay the databases that we order collectively through Metronet and then we pay Farmington Library.
Gotcha, okay.
Thank you.
That's what I assumed you would. Interesting.
Okay.
I'm I'm going to support what Shane was asking. We should take a serious look at the databases that we have and what is really being used, so.
Yeah, something to consider before we have that conversation is that there are some databases that libraries should just have. Value Line is a great example because that's not an inexpensive database.
It is not.
I just worry that when you look at the usage, you might think it's not, again, from a business point of view. But it's just some, we we've got to have value line.
Okay, and maybe this is not the appropriate time to have this whole conversation. My my response back to that is, why? Because we should question everything all the time. Why do you, why would you feel? And you don't have to answer that now, but that's what I would ask is, why would you feel that way? What happened to be find out that there's like three people using Value Line? Now, is it?
Well, there are some databases that you get through the state and some that the state gives you a. Subsidized a value, but most of them are bought on a volume basis, so you're getting. A discount based on the vendor, giving that to either the state or Metronet or Michigan Electronic Library. There are ways that you can take the vendors' numbers of use. And you literally are dividing it by, you know, the cost of it. I think what what we're kind of delving into here is. There are certain. Reasons why a public library would subscribe to certain things like Value Line because it helps businesses. It helps entrepreneurs. Helps people to develop within their community. And hopefully, you know, do better and thrive within their community.
Value line to stock.
Yes.
It's the Bible. It's the Bible for anyone who.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not questioning it. I'm just saying that. It seems like it may be worth just to have a little accession to just go through them and.
Sure.
And. That's all. I thought that was a good idea.
Yeah, we've been talking about statistics and thinking about what to share. And databases is one, because we do spend a lot of money on databases and. So, yeah, we'll we'll work on that and work on getting a.
The other thing you can do is you probably have an A to Z list.
Uh, we actually don't, but we.
Okay, conversation. Anyway, there, you can go and look at the databases that. The library has and they'll give you a brief description of each one of them. Which would be a good idea for us to have, but at the same time, I think that's also kind of delving into collection management. In a good way.
It's good for your information. Yeah, so you can understand the operation better.
Okay. I, if if you think it's, if you think it's inappropriate for the the board to be asking questions about that, I'm fine with that too. You know, it's, you know, I don't want to. Get into an area that's not appropriate for the board to get into. If you, as the director, have decided that this is something that we should have in the library. I'm there. You have my full support.
But you can still ask questions about it. And understand it.
Okay.
To be continued.
To be continued.
We might all find. Some databases that we didn't know anything about that we could use in our lives.
Sure, you know, I think that's a. And I do delve into collections because there could be a book that's not been checked out for. Six years and all of a sudden there's a popular show and they'll be like, this book. I mean, like Kate Bush, Kate Bush, now her songs are popular and she was popular in the nineties and now she's back.
Good example.
There we go. So are there any other questions that people would like to bring up? And if not, we need to have a motion then to approve the items that were removed from the consent agenda.
Shane has a question.
I have two things.
Oh, thank you.
Other, other, not that I ever understood what that was, but.
Oh, that's just, I like saying other, other, but we haven't gotten other, other. Is this for other, other? Okay, okay, guess, guess. Okay, so we just have to get this motion first. This is just the items removed from the consent. So may I? Thank you, Keith. Could we have a second? Thank you. All those in favor? All right, now we are, it was when I was president, I like to say other, other, so. So we're going to maintain that. Is there any other, other Shane?
I sent Linda the note about this chart. So this was our finance committee package chart. And the answer is that, because I thought the chart was screwed up, but the chart's actually accurate.
It's accurate.
And the point was that we only get, we didn't get any twenty one revenue because of COVID.
Yeah.
Okay, so we got six grand of revenue.
Well, their quarterly commission checks did not come quarterly. We had, we have had to follow up always to get a commission check. From Corporate Dining, so that commission check covered. The second half of twenty twenty, all of twenty twenty one and the first half of twenty twenty two.
That was a lot of money, that was a lot of money that I was expecting.
Yes, so that covered almost two years, including pandemic times. So it's a lot lower than it would have been. But we have always had to request the commission check. It was not just.
Hopefully perfection won't do that.
And then you have another, other, other?
The other is that in the industry commentary, we are in our business looking at the chat feature and what it can do for. The other is the, in the end, just commentary, we are in our business looking at the chat feature and what it can do for us. And it basically, it re- it, I hate to say the word, replaces a lot of people in our call center. So when you call and you want a service appointment. We have sixty eight people in the West that do that, but we won't very long. I don't know, and I don't know what we are, if we're even embracing any of the technology. But from a use side, it would be very interesting for us to see how we could use it. But from a customer service side, it might be wonderful to use if we could get some of that. You know, it, it, there's some, a lot of things that I think are routine. Where's this book? How many times can you, and this technology can absolutely do that. So I just blow that out there.
We don't. We have a way to ask questions by email, but we don't have an IM chat. We tried it some years ago when that first.
I think it was through spring share.
Yeah, and it just wasn't, it didn't tape off here, but we can try it again, cause it's been some years.
Which is, even if it's educational promotion for the, for the patrons, cause I would love to, I mean. It's dinner table conversation and nobody knows what we're talking about, you know? It'd be fun to, I, that's a lecture.
If you'd invite us to dinner, we would.
Noted, thank you.
Thank you, Shane. Is there any other, other? My other, other would be um that um the browning of the urns. You know, the material in there is like, so.
Needs a refresh?
Well, they, I, they're not gonna put anything for spring yet, but if they could at least pull the greens out, because they are, they're dead and they look bad and. So it would be nice. And we've had such nice weather now. Of course, tomorrow's gonna be horrible, but we've had. Um, the urns are not completely frozen, so even if they have to clip them, it would just look better.
Okay, are you talking about the ones around?
The four and also the one here by the front door is, um, all the greens are brown.
Okay.
All the greens are brown.
There must be a scam in that.
There is, I, and this guy is great. Um, other, other for anyone else?
I, I'm gonna give an other, other about friends of the library.
Oh, yes, please. I'm so sorry, I forgot that.
That's okay. Um, I think that's my chat, right? Um, they had a near record sale in January as well. Uh, it's like just under thirty nine dollars, then they would have been another record, just amazing. So over nine thousand dollars. Um, did you mention about your wish list getting approved? You whiteboards are coming, yes. Um, thanks to the friends of the library. Um, also. Wanted to mention that their annual meeting is coming up on May third, and I don't know. How many of you attend or would like to attend, but.
I would love to attend.
Do you belong?
I am.
Yeah, you'll get an invitation. You get an invitation if you're, if you're a member, so that would be lovely. It's May third at eleven thirty. And um the speaker is going to be Jeff Morrison, who was here. I think he's been here a couple of times before. He's the one that wrote um Guardians of Michigan and Guardians of Detroit. Um, he's a writer about architecture and um I guess he's just phenomenal. He lives in Oxford. And so he will be speaking and um, so that's him.
Thank you. Any other, other? Okay, so if there is none, I just wanted to go through a couple of things. Our next scheduled meeting is Tuesday, March twenty first. And our topic is going to be the adoption of the twenty three twenty four budget. In a few minutes, um. Keith is going to make a motion um regarding going into the closed session, which we need to do and have that on the records. And what's going to happen then is everyone except for the more from the leave. And um we will have a discussion and then as soon as the discussion is over, we will call back um Tara to come in for a few minutes. And then we will bring the meeting back into session and then adjourn the meeting, so um. So that we're following Robert's rules of order, um I'm going to have Keith make the motion and if some, one of you will second it. Um, and then Joan, when we're in our meeting, will take the minutes, which is, she's really just following this protocol here, so.
I'm sorry, I don't understand.
You're gonna read, just, just read this, just that.
This part up here. Upon discussion, a motion was made by.
I'm sorry, you wanna just write the, in the, in the highlighted.
Oh, to go into, so the motion is to go into closed session for purpose, purposes of the library director contract and performance evaluation.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks, Joe. Joy, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi, I'm reopening the meeting, um, eighty six, what I said, it's now eight thirty three. Uh, we've called the meeting back into session. Do we make a motion to renew the contract then here? Okay. Um, so we did have a closed executive session to discuss whether or not to renew the contract for Tara Moon um as library director. Um, could we have a motion to um accept the renewal?
I so moved.
Thank you. All, is it, any further discussion? We're very pleased. Um, all those in favor to renew Tara Moon's. Contract for the fiscal year of twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four um for library director, all say aye. All right.
Okay.
Okay. I can, I'm now I'm gonna call um the meeting, uh, adjourn the meeting at eight thirty four.
Okay.